Investment into the project, so Glen County would take on phases two, or sorry, one and two at 176, Brunswick would take on phase three at 149, the CBB would take on phase four at 200,000. The remaining costs would be the monument signs and What else did I forget? Oh, so we have, I'm wrapping up. Did everyone get those numbers? They sink in?
Two people over here got them, I think.
So our choices, we can attempt to do this in-house and there are municipalities that do that, and we would work ourselves with DOT, Glen County, the city of Brunswick, and the CBB to try to do this ourselves. The reason why the second one's all in bold is we could approve this comprehensive sign proposal and do a three-way partnership with signage vendors. We could either choose National Signage Plaza, who is the one who created this plan and quote, or we could go out to others and try to see if we can get a better quote. Certainly, the CBB stands ready to do this. We put in those signs 30 years ago on St. Simon's and they are definitely past their useful lifespan, so we would like to try to get the project going as soon as possible if the commissioners agree to this original agreement of a three-way partnership. And then after we get some decisions, then we could also just look at beginning a comprehensive gateway beautification and management plan because signage is the first step. I think there's opportunities to work with the various entities to beautify those gateways even more upon this, just the signage. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Yes?
Scott, it's been so long since we discussed this first time. How's the maintenance and upkeep on these things work over time?
So you could choose a few different options. You could either choose the option that you pay a fixed fee and the signage company covers those maintenance costs throughout the life of the program, or however long you continue to renew the program, or you can pay per sign when it gets damaged. You know, I would, you know, although there's been several signs hit in my time here, most of them have been the monument signs. I think most of your highway signs are probably going to be pretty clear from getting damaged, but that will be a risk that you either have to take or pay for.
I'm assuming too, if we were to opt for their maintenance program, we still have to visually go out and assess
Right.
all the signs periodically and then let them know which ones, so, you know, unless they got feet on the ground right here.
Is this a company we started off with when we started that?
Yeah.
Sure is.
Yeah, and the reason we chose this company is they were one of the few sign companies that did all the field work, all the prep and taking us through the whole
You know, you're spending more money. And I'm not complaining about tourism, but I have an idea where our money's going, you know? And I'd just like to see, you know, what you all were budgeting and doing in the last few years before this extra money has started coming in with economy come back, and what you're doing with that money today, and maybe we can take the largest slice so that you guys do even more of this before we opt in. Because that's a, I think that's a heck of a, you guys have a made, okay? You have a law that sits in place of, you know, a collection of the tax or fee, whatever you want to call it, and you use that money to go out and promote, get more money, more people to come into the community and
All right.
get a bed. And all the impacts of that, though, we burn. We have to share that burden with our tax dollars. And so I just think it's time that we take a look at that. And I'll be the first to say you guys are doing a great job, doing a great job, but I see that revenues are going up for everybody. And, but the cost of us providing services is going up
Right. Yeah, so one of the things that's unique about the bed tax, and thank you for your comments, Commissioner, is we currently are taxing at a rate of 5%. So if we were to move above that or choose a different way to tax additional money, more money would be available for tourism product development. Right now, by law, because of the percentage that we are taxing, the only reason that the CBB's even able to contemplate spending that 200,000 is because our split is 10% more generous currently than it can be by law. In other words, you guys can keep 60% of the bed tax. Right now, for the last 25 some odd years, we've split it at 50/50. That allows us to do projects like that, but it doesn't really allow us to have ample funds to put them in the ground. And I think we'll face this also with Coast Guard Beach, any of these tourism product improvements, is that we haven't really identified the dollars to carry some of these projects through.
So, Scott, so are we, where are we in relation to our competition in the bed tax? Or, and/or what are the alternatives to charging more fees or whatever to help offset some of these costs in this, projects like this?
I would say that we're, we're low as far as our bed tax is concerned. There's a good number of municipalities that are at 8% at the maximum you can charge. There's probably what's more the average is somewhere in the middle between 6 and 7. So, you know, that's one avenue that can be taken to find additional funds. There's also the avenue of creating tourism improvement districts, which would allow all that money to go towards tourism improvements. So there are definitely options, and, you know, with this and other projects, it's coming time that we probably discuss those in more detail.
But Scott, we've been discussing raising the bed tax since 2012
Mm-hmm.
because I was involved in that, as you well know.
Yeah.
And we were pushing hard to raise it, either 6% or 7% or whatever. Has that just fallen by the wayside over the years? Has it just kind of gotten abandoned, or?
No, I think it's definitely back on the top of the conversation list. I think the, what hasn't been decided of, at least within the tourism industry and the lodging industry and my board specifically, is what, what is the best mechanism to take? It's very hard to move an initiative forward without complete agreement, and I think that's one of the holdups. Because if bed tax increases were to be brought forward and the hoteliers did not agree with it, or at least the majority, then they can try to hold it up at the state level, which has happened. So want to try our best to be in unison, but I think we are with all this backlog of projects, because if we do raise the bed tax, or if we do a tourism improvement district, what is required by law is tourism improvement. It no longer goes to the county's general fund, and it no longer goes to the CBB's marketing fund. It goes towards product development. So, you know, it's a lot to undertake as far as understanding it, but it's probably, maybe in a future work session, I could really go through where we're at with it and where the law is and where we stand and give you some of that background.
Yeah, I would, I would say from my own experience, when I travel, I know Atlanta, I know they have a high interest. I know they have. I never look at it. I never look at it. I don't want to pay, I mean, if it's $139 for a room night, you know, if I can pay that, I am going to pay that bed tax.
It's because you're staying with your son, you ain't paying the money. Unless he's charging you.
We have that $5 add-on per night.
Well, that's state, yeah.
That goes to the state.
But, but, you know, you haven't heard a whole lot of pushback about that.
No, it's
It hasn't been popular with the hotel operators, I can tell you that.
Popular with the state.
Yeah, it's been very popular, DOT.
Well, let me ask you, do you have a feel where the hoteliers are on increasing the bed tax locally?
I think it really depends on what those projects are and who controls them and, you know, how they get implemented, because again, those dollars are going to go towards product development, so I think that's
So if it be the split, we would?
The split, once you get above 5%, the split kind of goes away. It's now mandated by law that product development comes into play. And I just learned this more recently, really digging into it, is the county actually, they could take back the 10% extra from the CBB, but they, it ends up being the same as we go up. It just means that we're going to have to start investing in product development, and they classify that as new services that didn't exist, like this didn't exist, like the Coast Guard Beach improvements didn't exist, or the gateway improvements didn't exist. So you can't offset existing expenses back onto those funds.
Well, I take it from your conversation, there hasn't been any push to bring this forward in this legislative session to try to get it done in 2019.
I can't say that for sure, but we are getting close, we'll say that.
So what you're saying is we can't raise it locally? It has to go through the state?
That's correct. It has to get approved at the Capitol.
Yeah, this is all great information. You got something?
Yeah, related to the sign, I think.
Related to what?
Related to the sign.
Yeah, 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 okay. The, what exactly do you want from this body today?
Um, well, ideally
You want option number two?
Yeah, option number two is a good one.
You want option number two?
My clicker stopped working.
You know, I think
There we go, option number two, yes.
Frankly, you know, I guess I was just naive as to the magnitude of this thing. I just, I don't know why, I was thinking about a little sign here and one there and moving around there or something, but I really, it's impressive what we're talking about. And the only thing I'd say there is, this is a community effort. This isn't a city deal, this isn't a county deal, this isn't a CBB deal, or even Jekyll Island, if they wanted to participate, this is a community thing, and it's about who we are as a community. And I just think 30-year-old signs that are rotten, that are falling down, and what we looked at in some of these pictures is not who we want to be. And so, I mean, I'm, Mike, I hear you, I hear you loud and clear, but I just think we need to move, move forward and get this thing, get this thing done, and look like who we are rather than who we want to be. So, I'm sorry, Julie, go ahead.
We are kind of worn out. One question I have specific on the signs, is there anything on the backside? What's going to be on the backside? I realize it's challenging to try to put anything directional or else on the backside, but is it going to be blind, is there a logo?
They did have a treatment on there that was just a colored treatment, so you wouldn't be looking at just the back of a metal piece. Yeah.
Are those the colors? These the colors?
That is the proposed design, yeah.
They seem to look bland to me.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you, both heartily. We've been working on this for quite a bit. When it first came to this community, we got a briefing about it, and we all, the three of us, the three, city, county, and CBB agreed to that we would do something for our community, and we were trying to do that. And I really commend the CBB for pushing it this far. And also, since we just had the RSM, you know, we need to have something that's aesthetically, that looks really good for our community. And so, and I believe that we as a community can get this done and have it set up so we look like a big, I mean, a really good, beautiful community.
Scott, I have no problem with that, but what's the price tag for a county?
176.
$176.
Dollars than anything else right here.
We can take it out of petty cash. You know, without knowing where the money's going to come from.
I think Mr. Howard said we're putting out the money.
We got the money. Oh, I know you do, but I'm not We got the money. trying to decide what all the county city's got to do. Believe you me. Don't want me to get into that, but We're good. But, but, but I just, I just think we, the county needs to have a little more thorough discussion about where we're going to get the money from.
We're going to write a check.
We're going to write a check.
Oh.
Just get some checks in the checkbook.
Scott, I asked him probably go about
We're good.
the state signs versus these signs. Also, can, is this going to help consolidate a lot of our signs?
It will. We'll be able to actually remove signs from the road, and that's another piece of what we want to do as, as far as that beautification and management plan, is get, get rid of places where we are oversigned.
Well, the reason I ask that, I know not too long ago, there was a discussion on, right on the show in the morning, about how many signs somebody had counted on just the causeway.
Sure.
It was 120 plus or something like that. So, I mean, all these little itty-bitty things can
Consolidate, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to put this on the agenda for our meeting December the 6th, and the mayor
Sure, it's already done for us.
You're through, you're done?
It's already, it's a done deal.
Would you like to pay our part?
You can save it up.
Well, I'll believe that.
Thank you all, Commissioners, I greatly appreciate it.
Okay, well, I'm glad I didn't have that first thing for 30 minutes like I tended to, wanting to talk me into an hour. Okay, welcome, we'll begin the special call meeting of the county and the city, certainly more than welcome to stage and be with us, but I would expect a mass exit. Okay. We've enjoyed seeing you.
As usual.
Okay, item number one, thank you, appreciate it. You want to say anything?
Yes, sir, just the fact that we appreciate being a part of this and just really so this community can work, can work together, and I really appreciate it, and my Commissioners as well. So thank you for that. And we have other issues that when we, for the essence of time, we just let those go until
What was that you want to talk about? You want to talk about?
We can add something to the agenda if you want to, Mr. Mayor.
No, you got to really go.
Oh, bless, you just let me know.
Yeah, I'll talk to Aaron and
Okay, we're going to receive a presentation from the Recommended Investment Manager for the Pension Fund, and I think he's been here for about a week, so I think I met him coming
Everybody, hello.
Mr. Prosser.
Take a seat. We'll call a meeting to order for our regular special call meeting and appreciate everybody's participation in the joint meeting. All right, first item on the agenda is receive a presentation for the recommended investment manager for the pension plan, Ms. Mular.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As you know, Mr. Kelly, well, I'll go back. It was time for us to bid out our pension, investment manager, and trustee services. And as you know, Mr. Kelly is not going to be our investment manager anymore. He chose not to bid on it. So we had an evaluation team. We scored all of the companies. Bowen, Haynes &amp; Company came out on top, but we interviewed the top two companies. We had presentations from both, and I won't take any more of their time. Bowen, Haynes &amp; Company is here for you to do a presentation today and answer any questions you may have. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Jay Bowen, and this is Mr. David Kelly.
So they were chosen by the personnel committee?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Done, done it.
Okay, well, great. It's good to see everybody. And just to give you a brief background on our company, we've had a couple of meetings here, and it's been great to meet everybody and very impressed with your defined benefit plan. Bowen, Haynes &amp; Company is just a, it's very confusing when you hear the term money manager now because it can mean so many different things. Bowen, Haynes, we're in our 44th year, and very similar to your current situation, we're relatively small, independent, traditional investment counselor. We're not a bank, we're not a custodian, we're not a broker. It's high-quality, independent investment counsel. And our clients consist of primarily municipal funds and foundations and endowment funds and private, profit-sharing plans and pension funds, and we also manage some individuals and family groups. And like I say, we're in our 44th year, and I think that our average client has been with us 25 years. Most of our clients, or several of our clients, I should say, have been with us over 30 and even 40 years. And it's a high-quality, long-term approach. I think that the reason we've had, that we've been able to forge such long-term relationships, very similar to what you have now, as a matter of fact, is that our clients really appreciate the ability to work one-on-one with the senior executives of the firm. We don't have a lot of layers. Like I say, we're not brokers, we're not custodians. We do the individual stock and bond selection and manage each account individually, is what we do. And like I say, we very much appreciate our clients, very much appreciate being able to work with us. If there's any issue on anything, it's, we work with them directly. They call us directly, so they're not, we don't have hundreds and hundreds of people. We have four senior professionals. Our firm, and I'll show, we'll show a little video at the end, our firm has received national acclaim for our management of the Tampa Fire and Police Pension Fund. We've been the sole manager of that plan. We just started our 44th year, and we've been the sole manager, and the plan has grown from 12 million to over $2 billion during our tenure, and they've actually taken over a billion out. So we've received a lot of great national acclaim for that relationship. In terms of our style and approach, it's a very much of a thematic, top-down approach, where, you know, there are all different ways to invest assets, and there have been very successful bottom-up managers. We just happen to be a top-down manager, where we're looking thematically at trends, both national and international trends, economic trends, technological trends, political trends, monetary, trade, fiscal policy issues, and then we kind of work our way down into the various sectors and industries, and then the companies that we think make the most sense. And with your particular account, it would be very similar to what you've been doing for the last 28 years, and very similar to what we do in Tampa in terms of a high-quality, balanced approach, where the stocks would be used for capital appreciation, and the bond side of the portfolio would be used for income instability. And on the bond side, it's a timing strategy based on interest rate anticipation. And like I say, over the last, we take a very long-term approach. We actually take a 20-year investment approach. And over the last several decades, just to highlight some of, from a top-down standpoint, some of the work we've done, just to give you a flavor of how we work, during the early 80s, our firm was very focused on what we thought was going to be an era of falling inflation, falling interest rates, and higher rates of real economic growth. And so we kind of positioned both the stock and bond portfolios accordingly. During the 90s, we really transitioned more into this era of what we thought was emerging in terms of an international, unrelated global economy, after the Berlin Wall fell down, and what that meant globally for a lot of companies. So we very much, our focus was on companies, both consumer-oriented and industrial-oriented companies, that had strong international strategic business plans to exploit these markets around the world. During the 2000s, we were very focused on, when China joined the WTO, very focused on how that was going to impact global economic growth and particularly commodity prices. Currently, what we're looking at now, we're big believers in the Fourth Industrial Revolution, and it's, we're focused on, during the 90s, we had very much a wave of high-tech innovation and risk-taking, but back then, the focus was on areas like desktop computing and computer software, fiber optics, that kind of thing. Really, now, the focus is more on these fourth industrial-type revolutionary areas like 5G, for instance, which is the new build-out, wireless build-out, and robotics, and artificial intelligence, and industrial automation, and blockchain, and quantum computing, and 3D printing, areas like that. So that's not our exclusive focus, but that is our, one of our main, from a top-down thematic standpoint, one of our, one of our main areas of focus, not to mention the normalization of interest rates that we think is going to proceed over the next several years. In terms of, let me just briefly talk about the current market situation, because I'm sure that's of interest. We are in the midst of a correction, and I think what it comes down to, from our standpoint, is we're really looking at, is this more of a 1987 situation, where we had a sharp correction within a continuing bull market? Or is this more of a 2007 situation, where we're on the precipice of a recession and a deep economic downturn? And we would, we would say that it's the former. I don't, looking at the economic landscape, I just don't see, I don't think we're on the verge of a recession. I think this is, there's a lot of uncertainty swirling around right now on a variety of issues. Some of them have been answered, some of them are still hanging out there. The midterm elections were one issue that we're swirling in terms of what that might mean for, particularly for fiscal and budgetary policy. That's behind us now, and so the market can kind of settle into this era of divided government that's going to be emerging. The other two big ones right now involve global trade and tariff issues, particularly with China. There's a big G20 summit at the end of November in Buenos Aires that will, I think, go a long way to. We've done actually quite successfully the last 28 years, but from what we've done, particularly with Tampa Fire and Police over the last 44 years. David, you want to talk about performance?
Okay. Give Jay a little break. I'm David Kelly. I've been with the firm 21 years, and I put these charts together. I can't really see those, my eyes aren't that good, but I can work off of that one. Let me kind of highlight just what I'm demonstrating there. The blue bar is Bowen, Haynes Balanced Composite. That's all of our charities and endowments pension plans scrolled into one, and that's the weighted average return, and that's audited by ACA compliance by a third party. The green bar is the Tampa Fire and Police. It's a public fund. It's, can, certainly can disclose their performance, and everybody likes to see. That's our largest client, and it's a public plan. The yellow or gold is really, is Glen County. Received those, the performance information from Gene Kelly at Marshwind Advisory. And then the red is really kind of important. That's the Willshire Analytics. They, for four decades, have tracked public plans and charities and endowments, et cetera. So they have a database of very large, the average public plan is $6 billion, and they track their performance. And you really want to do better than half your peers. And you can see for the one in three years, very solid, really, everybody, everybody's beating the red. We're comparing nicely to Marshwinds ourselves. 10-year, our average client probably has more like 70% in equities, so that's the last decade in there, the 10-year number. You can see, actually, Glen County's done a skunch better. But when you go out 15 years, and if you go to the next page, thank you, look at our 20-year, 25, and 28-year, that's the maximum numbers we had. Tampa certainly outstripping the Willshire and doing a little better than Glen County. And I think to Jay's point, you know, Gene Kelly was picking the right areas and industries and asset allocation. We're doing the exact same thing. You know, like to say, just a little bit better, but certainly on par. And when you're changing horses after 29 years, I think you're going from a one-man shop, you're expanding to a four-person shop. But at least we've been able to bring in a nice track record. Now, I want to put, the next chart is actually the Willshire Performance Comparison. Wells Fargo's the custodian for Tampa, and along with Willshire, they collect data on all these pension plans, and this, the next page will show you how we've done amongst our peers. And that's a little small, but Tampa's performance is on the bottom, and in the parentheses is our percentile, and you're good, is our percentile ranking. And being in the small numbers better than being in the ninth percentile. You can see, four quarters last year through December of 17, we were at 20.98%. That puts us in the first percentile of all the pension plans that they cover, which is 154 plans they track. And look at our 3, 5, 10, 15-year, 20, 25, 30, and 35-year numbers, but also look at the absolute numbers. We've compounded at double digits at 30 and 35 years. And I know for these plans to stay healthy and fluid and fiscally sound, you want to do about 8%, seven and three-quarters, and we've done 50% better than that over three and a half decades. Actually, our 44-year number, which isn't on here, I believe is about 11 and change. So, you know, we're going through some bumps right now, but overall, when you smooth it out, we feel like we've certainly shown that we can meet and match the 8% goal.
And I think this is an important database, because this is the Willshire, which is known really as the definitive public fund database. So this is, these are our peers, and all of these other plans are doing it the other way, and we're doing it the Tampa way, and your way. It's not always the Tampa model, it's the Glen County model in terms of one core unconstrained, high-quality manager. I think that's, that's important, because this is kind of the report card.
Right. When you see, you know, the San Diego Fire and Police are doing X percent, they'll always say, as compared to the Willshire Tux peer comparison.
And the fee.
Oh, yeah. And the last meeting last week, just real quick on the fees, there seemed to be some discrepancy about our fee, whether that was high or low. I sourced a Greenwich, Connecticut consulting firm. They did a big national study about pension plans. And if you're a $500 million planner less, the average fee was 51 basis points, if you're 50% domestic stocks, 15% foreign, and 35% bonds. So the weighted average is 51 basis points, which dovetails with what I said last week. North Carolina did a big study, and they came up with 50 basis points was the average. You know, we're at 20 and 23%, I'm sorry, 23 basis points, which is half basis points, which is, which is half the national average of $500 million plans that are on there.
And each year it'll go up incrementally.
A little bit, yeah.
A little bit, right. And the Tampa plan, just for those, and you may have mentioned it while I was going, it's a $2 billion?
That's correct.
Pension plan?
Yes.
That y'all are managing?
Right.
And you have, how many plans are you? We've got, we've got about, I would say, about 110 relationships out of those. Of course, from a dollar standpoint, most of that, most of that is municipal money, because Tampa's large, and we have a handful of other municipal plans that we work with also, probably a total of...
It's probably, I'd say 30, 35 institutions, charities and endowments. We've managed money for orphans, churches, public money as well, obviously.
In terms of the number of municipal plans we have, it's...
Probably about a dozen.
We've had some good, high-quality referrals from our relationship in Tampa. People have heard about us, particularly in Florida, so we've got a handful of other smaller municipal plans. If we had a second, I would love to pull up our website and just show you a quick interview that really, I think, does a great job of summarizing not only our philosophy managing municipal pension funds, but also the long-term nature of the relationship.
So basically, you know, just cutting to the chase here, 21 basis points, a couple hundred thousand dollars, is that where we're?
21, right. I think it starts at 20. It's 230. Isn't it the 230? 230,000? 23 basis points off of, yeah. 195 million, whatever, yeah. About 230 is the first one. So we're somewhere in that neighborhood, exactly, yeah.
It's the, that's... If they do, if they make these reforms that I think they should make, I don't think it's unrealistic, an 8, 9% number for assumed rate of return. What we've done, we've had the luxury, it's been an extremely dedicated board for 43 years. They've given us the luxury, believe it or not, of taking a 20-year investment approach, which is very unusual. We liked the 20-year because in the study we did, there hadn't been a 20-year period that has not included a bull market and a beer market and recession and a speculative bubble and a war. So we think that's a great timeframe to measure the competency of a manager. The other thing is, the actuary's like 20 years, because it's a great snapshot of the, of a public service employee, fireman, policeman, so it kind of matches up.
When you take a 20-year timeframe, what does that allow you to do? What investments can you make that you couldn't do otherwise?
Yeah, it's a luxury. It's a luxury. We can, we're not being jerked around by an asset allocator trying to shift into, I call it, it's a multi-layer, multi-fee, multi-manager model, the other model. Tampa is one manager with a high-quality, long-term approach. It's, we're top-down and thematic, and so we can really look ahead.
But what's, just for an example, what's one investment you might be able to make that other pension funds wouldn't be able to?
Yeah, I mean, there've been several over the, over the last four decades. I mean, my father forged a relationship in the early 70s, but, I mean, the decisions that we made in the early, late 70s and early 80s, going back that far, when Paul Volcker came in on the monetary front, and Reagan came in on the fiscal front, and the regulatory front, we decided that inflation was going to be coming way down. So, in other words, we were able to overemphasize consumer staple names that had flatlined, and we were able to really look out, you know, the Coca-Colas and the Gillets of the world. In the early 2000s, when China joined the WTO, it was more of a focus on the commodity situation, what it's going to mean for global commodity prices. Right now, looking out over the next 20 years, we're big believers in the Fourth Industrial Revolution. We think that's going to impact particularly on the capital spending front, and I'm talking about artificial intelligence and blockchain and robotics and automation, industrial automation, 3D printing.
How concentrated is your portfolio?
We've got about 60 equity names. It's a high-quality balanced approach. The stocks are used for capital appreciation, are used for income instability, and we've got about 60, 60 names.
Look, you've gotten it right, but the question is, the idea of a pension fund handing all their money to one manager, does that, does that truly make sense to you across the board?
Well, the other, the other consultant-driven, multi-manager model has been a prescription for mediocrity. They're operating off of a flawed modern portfolio theory playbook, based on aggression analysis.
If I pick the wrong manager, if I put all my eggs in one basket, what's going to happen?
Well, if you, I mean, if you let them, I mean, there are plenty of high-quality managers out there. And the advantage of having one high-quality core manager is that, number one, the fees, I mean, this current model that so many pension funds are using, the multi-layer, multi-manager, multi-fee model, I mean, if you take a $5 billion public pension fund and you return 7% instead of 7.5%,
Right.
Over 20 years, that's $1.9 billion less money for these, for these pension funds. And I say that because the average fee for the 58 basis points. So you're going to be helped on the fee side. You're also going to be helped because you're not going to be moving, gyrating from an asset allocation standpoint, letting the manager focus on the, on the long-term.
How would you feel about just letting it ride on index funds, sort of a...
Absolutely, absolutely. That would be far superior to the current model. I mean, right now, the asset allocation decisions these funds have made precisely at the wrong time. They've reallocated, you know, in the early, in the late 90s, early 2000s, there was this huge push towards tech stocks, right at the wrong time. In the mid-2000s, everybody wanted to be Yale. There was a huge push to alternative investments, right at the wrong time, hedge funds and private equity. Since, I mean, we've been, this is the 10th year of this bull market. We've compounded at 15% a year, but yet, public funds have been reducing their equity exposure, again, right at the wrong time. Now, why is that? I mean, I think I know why.
It's a little bit long-winded, but just to give you a flavor of really what we're doing and what we're after in terms of our, not only thematic style, but the long-term nature of the approach. There's also some, some very good information on our website, including an article that I did for Barron's on the 20-year investment approach, that I would love for you all to read if you want to delve into it a little further on our thinking on the 20-year approach. So it's all, it's all on the website.
I appreciate it. Thank you. The, I guess we'll put this on the December 6 agenda, and I know that you know as well as anybody on the planet, you're stepping into some big shoes, and I sense that you're up for the challenge, and so...
Yeah, we've been...
We're expecting you to fill those shoes.
Well, you've had a tremendous relationship and record, there's just no doubt about it, and the parallels, really, there are a lot of similarities with what we've done with Tampa in terms of, so we found it striking that there was another high-quality situation out there that was using the same model that we were using with Tampa, so we would welcome the opportunity.
Well, we had a pretty good run.
Yeah.
Sounds like you had to. Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all coming today. Sorry you had to wait so long.
No, that's all right. No problem. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody got any questions? I don't have enough sense to ask a question. The, all right, I'm going to move item number four up, and I'm sorry, library folks, but you got thrown under the bus. Receive a report on the operations and management study from the International Association of Chiefs of Police, IACP. Chief Powell.
Mr. Chairman, Boards and Commissioners, I'd like to introduce Chief Joe Price and also Ms. Amanda Bernstein. Ms. Amanda's from DC, and Chief Price is from South Carolina. They actually were involved in the report process. Chief Price was actually on the ground, was one of the interviewers, and then Ms. Bernstein helped craft the report and put it together. So they were here to present that report and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As Chief Powell said, I am Joe Price. I appreciate him giving me the title of chief. That was a form of life. I'm now retired. I serve as a consultant for the International Association of Chiefs of Police, and Ms. Bernstein is a project manager. Just a quick background on the IACP, for those of you who may not be familiar with it, it is the largest law enforcement association in the world. This is its 125th year of existence. It has over 30,000 members in 150 countries, and it has conducted these types of studies all across this country and, quite honestly, the world. The goal for this study for the citizens of Glen County was to enhance the effectiveness and productivity of police services in order to keep the community, or to provide the community with the highest level of police services. The study was conducted using a five-part methodology. We requested and received from the Glen County Police Department reams of data that was scrutinized, analyzed, contacts were made back with Chief Powell and his staff, so that we could get a clear picture of what's going on on a historic basis. Additionally, an onsite team came down here, I believe it was October of 17, was here for about a week. I was part of that. Our onsite team had over 100 years of law enforcement experience, all of it being in the chief's, chief executive role. That onsite interviewed 71 people within the agency, about 31% of the agency, plus 31 stakeholders from the community. In addition, we held two community meetings, one in the, I believe, the old courthouse, and one on St. Simon's, each with about 100 people there to obtain feedback from the community. We had a community survey, of which 77 people from the community responded, and a department survey, and about 25% of the department responded to that. So we had a very good picture as to what was going on in Glen County and what was needed. The report found a number of recommendations, and I do want to stress that a report of this type, operations and management study, looks at recommendations, but that is not necessarily reflective of the agency that we find, and I'll address that in a second. The resulting recommendations aligned with the six pillars centered around the 21st Century Policing Report that came out about three years ago, which the IACP was a major supporter and involved in that program. And nationally-recognized standards. What the IACP's goal is, to provide the agency and the community with our best analysis based upon both the data analysis and comparison to national standards and national best practices. So the major areas that we identified and have reported in the report and to Chief Powell and his staff is to reestablish a new mission statement for Glen County Police and enhance how the...
is a project manager. Just a quick background on the IACP, for those of you who may not be familiar with it, it is the largest law enforcement association in the world. This is its 125th year of existence. It has over 30,000 members in 150 countries, and it has conducted these types of studies all across this country and, quite honestly, the world. The goal for this study for the citizens of Glen County was to enhance the effectiveness and productivity of police services in order to keep the community or to provide the community with the highest level of police services. The study was conducted using a five-part methodology. We requested and received from the Glen County Police Department reams of data that was scrutinized, analyzed, contacts were made back with Chief Powell and his staff so that we could get a clear picture of what's going on on a historic basis. Additionally, an onsite team came down here, I believe it was October of 17, was here for about a week. I was part of that. Our onsite team had over 100 years of law enforcement experience, all of it being in the chief's, chief executive role. That onsite interviewed 71 people within the agency, about 31% of the agency, plus 31 stakeholders from the community. In addition, we held two community meetings, one in the, I believe, the old courthouse, and one on St. Simon's, each with about 100 people there to obtain feedback from the community. We had a community survey, of which 77 people from the community responded, and a department survey, and about 25% of the department responded to that. So, we had a very good picture as to what was going on in Glen County and what was needed. The report found a number of recommendations, and I, I do want to stress that a report of this type, operations and management study, looks at recommendations, but that is not necessarily reflective of the agency that we find, and, and I'll address that in a second. The resulting recommendations aligned with the six pillars centered around the 21st Century Policing Report that came out about three years ago, of which the IACP was a major supporter and involved in that program. And nationally-recognized standards. What the IACP's goal is to provide the agency and the community with our best analysis based upon both the data analysis and comparison to national standards and national best practices. So, the major areas that we identified and have reported in the report and to Chief Powell and his staff is to reestablish a new mission statement for Glen County Police and enhance how the department communicates through meetings with the agency, with the community, et cetera. And I can tell you that since I've been working on this project, I actually liked, I'm not sure that's the right term, but I liked Glen County Police's Facebook page, and I believe that they have done an excellent job in commuting, communicating with their constituents, their community through social media, which is the new way, even in law enforcement, that people are communicating. Chiefs used to know that if you had a critical incident, you had until the next news cycle to get that story out, to get your story out. That's no longer true. With the advent of social media, you have to be on that continuously, that platform continuously, and I applaud Chief Powell and his staff for the job that they're doing there. Second major recommendation was to create a new baseline for the agency's authorized strength. I know you all have seen the report. I know it's been public, it's out there. The IACP bases its staffing not on a per-thousand basis, not on a number of officers per geographic. We base it on workload. And so, when we analyze the workload, the concept that is best practice in this age, in this profession, is that a police officer should have a certain percentage of their time obligated. That means dedicated to answering calls for service. Citizens call in, request police services. Inherent in the police profession, a certain amount of time is required for administrative functions, whether, excuse me, whether it be court, whether it be training, check-in, check-out, writing reports, et cetera. The final part, and the most important part in today's world, is a component of time that should be dedicated for the officer to enhance community relations, community policing, problem-solving. And so, the IACP uses a model of 30, 30, 30, and 10% in there to deal with fluctuations between. The analysis we did for the Glen County Police Department of workload showed at this point in time, at the time we did the analysis, they were a little bit below the 25, the 20, I'm sorry, the 30%. And in a sense, they were staffed adequately to meet that 30, 30, 30. However, when you look at the other factors that we had to consider, the size of Glen County, the fact that the majority, both in this agency and most agencies, of that calls for service occurs during the daylight hours and early evening hours, once you get to the late night, midnight hours, most people, except the law enforcement community and maybe the bad guys, are home in bed asleep. And so, the workload may be less in the midnight hours. However, because of the nature of the profession, you can't have minimum staff out there because of the potential danger for events to happen, and there's no resources to help. So, the IACP has recommended increasing the staff in the patrol force for Glen County to 66. That provides sufficient officers across the 24-hour spectrum to not only ensure that the calls for service are handled in a timely fashion, in a correct fashion, but that the officers have that time that is so critical to engage their community in problem-solving activities and to build those critical relationships with them. Plus, it also provides sufficient officers to deal with the vast areas that you cover within, with a county police department and those unforeseen yet critical events that may occur during the off-hours. Another critical recommendation we made to Chief Powell and his staff was to implement community policing through a number of different events, strategies, tools, such as geographic policing, where you assign officers to a particular beat, and they take ownership of that community. They build that relationship with the community. They build that relationship with the residents. They know that community. More importantly, the community knows that officer. Also, institute intelligence-led policing. That sounds like a very highfalutin term or whatever, but what it really is, is looking at your data, analyzing your data, and developing actionable intelligence. Your neighbor, your Fletzy, is, is one of the, in the forefront of teaching that to local law enforcement. And it is a tool to use your resources in the most effective means. Part of that is called DEDAX, and I'm sorry I'll forget the acronym, but that's from the National Highway Traffic Safety, and it talks about using your crash statistics, using your incidence of traffic problems, and highlighting that for your enforcement efforts, rather than saying, "I'm willy-nilly going to go Main Street or Second Street or whatever." Go where the problems actually are. The final action was for Chief Powell and his staff to review their policies, particularly their critical policies, the ones that provide that critical guidance to officers, such as use of force, pursuit, and quite honestly, that provide the highest level of liability for the county. And I know the chief has, has done that, is continuing to do that, because court cases change, policies change, procedures change, community perceptions change. So, it's critical that that's an ongoing issue. During the onsite, we identified several issues immediately, for example, the policies, and we brought that to Chief Powell's attention, and I know he took immediate action to start that corrective process. What I want to leave you with is irrespective of the recommendations we made, or irrespective of the number of recommendations, the IACP team found the Glen County Police Department to be a full-service, community-oriented agency that continues to work very hard to keep the citizens of Glen County safe. It is our assessment and our belief that the department is moving in a very positive direction. It demonstrates a very strong and visible commitment to community policing and to collaborative problem-solving efforts with the community, non-government organizations, and other non-law enforcement agencies. That's our overview. Absent your questions, we thank you very much for this opportunity and very much have enjoyed our stay in Glen County. Commander? Yes, sir?
I would, I, I would like to say that, I mean, I read the entire report, and I commend you on the report. Of course, the report's based on the animal you had to deal with, and, but I, I, back in 2014, I went to county manager, and I told him I felt like we needed to do an audit of our police operations. I was interested in identifying any shortcomings the department had, being sure that we had the best-trained police officers that we could put on the street, you know, having our police officers understand how to better interact with the public, communicate with the public, find ways to handle interactions where, you know, tempers and emotions are engaged. We had some high-profile videos floating around, and so, I, I, I wanted us to learn from these experiences, to have somebody come in and look at what we're doing and where we need to go. And I tell you what, this, this has done that. I mean, I wanted to blue-brand, and I think the other commissioners did, you know, to get us where we were, to, 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 to have the best police force we could possibly have. And I tell you, I'm pleased with it. After reading the whole thing, reading the recommendations, the reason behind what you say in there, I, I, I just think it's a great tool to, to guide us of where we need to go, take those recommendations and embrace them as much as we can. And I'd like for the chief to hear that, and I think he, I think he's heard it loud and clear, but I, I tell you, this is, this is just what we need in Glen County to get us, get us going in the right direction and, and, and help us get to where we need to be. And I, I have thought to the work that you guys put into this, because this study, among the lot of things that we see coming into this, this thing very thoroughly, and you guys did a great job.
Well, Commissioner, we, we appreciate that very much. Quite honestly, you said what the IACP's goal is. We come in to take a snapshot study. We hear where you want the department to be, both where Chief Powell and the staff members want it, where the community wants it, and we try to give you the roadmap to get you there.
I think it is.
You know, I think it's significant, too, that this study was done in September of 2017. I think that's right.
Yes, sir. That was the onsite. Yes, sir.
Yeah, onsite, and, and I, I got to tell you, my sense is that this department has moved exponentially and in a very, very positive direction, and, I mean, you see the headlines of the drug bust, the things that cooperation with the other departments, whether the state or sheriff or whomever, is just, is just none of the good stuff. So, again, Commissioner, I agree, this is a good roadmap, and, and Chief Powell is, is implementing this thing.
Mr. Chairman, we concur with your assessment.
I have a couple of questions. I haven't had a chance to review or study this.
That's because you have a life.
Right. And so, my questions are maybe answered in this, but I'm sure that maybe some citizens may be interested in the response. On the use of force, what was the, any recommendations around that, based on what our policy is and what is our policy other than?
Well, we, we did recommend to Chief Powell that his policy be changed, and that this was back in September of 17, that it be changed to meet the, I'll call them the modern standards of which stresses sanctity of life for all, stresses the importance of de-escalation, stresses the importance of training your officers on how to de-escalate situations. We stressed, or we mentioned to Chief Powell, and I believe it's in the report, about the benefit of crisis intervention training, CIT, where officers are specially trained. And it's easy to sit here and throw this out because everything has a price tag to it. Not that it will cost you money to do it, but you'll have to send officers to the training off the street. But in the long run, it teaches officers how to better handle cases where there's mental illness involved. I know when I was the chief, my officers went through it, I went through it, and I spent eight hours with earphones on, listening to all kinds of different voices, to give me the same feeling that a schizophrenic person has. So, the training's invaluable to those officers, and I know Chief Powell is moving the agency toward that direction.
Right. A, a lot of the changes that Chief Powell has implemented, I totally support. I think he, he is the man for this job, and I, I believe that our county manager brought him in strategically when he, when he did. But back to the recommendations, the, what about the creation of a citizen review board or something like that when certain incidents happen in the community?
The IACP provides that information to the chief or departments. No two departments are the same in that. We do strongly advise and recommend agencies to establish different levels of community advisory boards. Now, whether they be part of a review board, there are pluses and minuses, sir, to both. Oftentimes, citizen review boards tend to slow down the process so much that the discipline becomes almost irrelevant by the time it makes it through the, the system. That being said, though, transparency cannot be overlooked in a modern police agency. And so, that involves publishing your statistics on complaints, it involves involving the community in developing policy, it involves involving the community in training. Many agencies, I did it with my agency, I invited community members to come in for our use-of-force training. So, they saw what an officer saw. They went through the interactive training, and they saw what the officer did. Quite honestly, the citizen killed more people than the officer's ever thought of doing, but they didn't have the knowledge of what the officer goes through. So, the, the short answer to it is transparency is key to any modern police agency.
And also, what about cultural diversity and dealing with, as a part of the training? We, obviously, there's been other incidents across the country with African-American men in law enforcement being killed innocently. And so, how, how are we addressing that issue based on your evaluation?
Once again, it comes back to transparency. One of the, one of the recommendations we have in there is to establish advisory committees or outreach groups, both geographically and within specific communities. So, Chief Powell, for example, could assign one of his command officers to reach out to the African, to be the liaison to the African-American community. Another one could be a liaison to the Asian community or the Hispanic community. So, there's a direct personal relationship, and that builds to a sense of trust, which is critical in a, in a modern police agency.
Any other comments or questions?
I just regret that when you were here, that you were not able to meet Argus, and the reason is, Argus had not been born yet, but Argus is now on staff, and Chief Powell will tell you about Argus, I'm sure, and, but maybe you'll get an opportunity to meet Argus along life's way. Any, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say it was an honor to do this for Glen County. Thank you very much for the opportunity. The cooperation that we got from the department was excellent, so very much appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I would, I'd like to add, if, if commissioners, those that hadn't read the, on the study, if you want to see just how thorough it is, go to the part about canine.
Bark and hold or bite and hold?
Yeah, yeah, just to, just to, I'll go and discuss that thing about canine and the, I guess it's tools schools have thought about how you should operate with canine unit, and just, just going to read that. I mean, if you'll see how thorough the thing was, it was, it was very interesting. I'd never thought about any of that, but it was still very interesting, and I thank you again.
Appreciate the...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate the agenda adjustment as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you. You as well. All right. We'll receive a, let's see, we'll, 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 we'll receive an update on the Brunswick Library Construction Project. I apologize for moving you back, but I tend to pay attention to people that carry guns. So, y'all would like to come up and give us a rundown on the construction project, and Jerry and Mike operate as a team, I see. Good.
Hey, y'all. So, I'm Jerry Mullis, the library director, and this is Mike Martin, the Board of Trustees' chair. So, he's going to just say a couple of things.
Well, we'll try to be quick, because I know it's getting late in the afternoon. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Trustees to thank the county for the support it has given to this project. The cooperation we have gotten out of all the county offices and agencies has been terrific, and it's really made the process go faster. We do want to invite each of the county commissioners and eventually the city commissioners to come down and take a tour of the library now while it's under construction. I think you learned a lot about the facility and, and what had to be dealt with. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hidden space in that building that we've uncovered, and it's really a, a pretty striking thing to see. So, again, thank you very, very much for your support on this. Now, I'm going to turn it over to the project manager, and as an editorial comment, I will say, I'm glad I'm not a subcontractor on a project she's running, so.
Whoops. Okay, so, speaking of, good news is we're in budget, and we are still on track. We still have a healthy contingency. We have run into a couple snags that our contingency has paid for, that in any renovation, you're going to find them. And yes, I may be a little bit, poor Benning, sorry. But this is the, just as an update, this is the floor plan that's still going, and we still will have that nice, large, 400-seat auditorium. And then, we've got some cool photos of destruction. So, one of the things, our front door is moving about 20 feet down to the old exit door, and we had our brick wall has been torn down. The entire front porch has actually been shortened to about the, about calf-length, so you can go up the steps, and it's nice and visible. Then, also, something that I didn't even think, I knew it was going to be great, but how much I really, really love this. This is the back entrance at the parking lot. So, that planter used to be as high as the sun is in that picture against the brick wall. It is now down, and we now have steps that go straight in. Like, I just keep walking up and down those steps. This is, it's a good thing on a bad day. But this is a picture of the library... it's a good thing on a bad day. But this is a picture of the library, when you're standing at the exit door, looking straight down. This is what it used to look like. And one of the things that we did was to make that straight hallway. And look, we have a straight hallway. So, this is what it looks like currently. We are starting to get some drywall up, but as you can see, studs are going up. And then, this is what it will look like, the rendering of when it's finished. And then, this is the new entrance into the library. As you can see, there is some drywall back on those walls in the study rooms. The front of them will be glass. We will have a really cool graphic image that Mr. Peter Boynton, who does aerial kite photography, has kindly donated to us a photo to be able to put on those back walls of downtown Brunswick. So, if you keep going, you'll see this is what it will look like from the rendering. And then, I also just wanted to let y'all know that the Board of Trustees is still doing the Turning the Page giving campaign, to be able to get those little bits of stuff that we just can't quite get out of our budget. You know, we're squeezing every dime, but not quite. We have gotten some very kind donations that will really help us along the way. And again, we are still collecting. Also, it wouldn't, let me, well, let me tell you the project timeline. So, demolition will be wrapped up with the installation of the new air handler and chiller that goes in at the end of this month. So, it's a big one for us. And then, after that, we're kind of on the downhill slide. We will be reopening to the public December 10th. But I do want the public to know that we are under construction. So, it will be limited service hours, it will be limited service. But this is to be able to get folks to come back in, they can pick up their holds at the library. We've got a popular collection for them to look at and check out. No DVDs, but we do have some audiobooks, and of course, computers. All of our programs are still offsite, 'cause we don't want those babies coming into the library. So, January is when the construction will still continue, but that's when really the finishes and the flooring goes in. So, to have the punch list done in February, and then installation of furniture starts. And then, in March will be the completion of the installation of furniture with a tentative grand party reopening celebration on first Friday, April 5. So, if we are completed before that date, we will already be open to the public, but April 5 will be the big event. And it wouldn't be a presentation from me without, oopsies, my daughter. And that's what I was gonna tell you, is that she's getting to be a little bit of a big girl now. This is her in her Halloween costume. But no fear, I still have baby pictures for you, because, watch out, I'm pregnant. So, May 20, just in time for the project to be completed, May 2019. So, do y'all have any questions?
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wouldn't want to be a subcontractor either, Mike. Well, that's exciting. It's gonna be a real asset to, to the community.
We'll have a conference center.
All right. We're gonna get into that. All right. Item number three, a discussion regarding the trees at Neptune Park. Commissioner Murphy, you wanna take this one, or you want somebody else?
No, we're good. Matthew, can you stick down there? So, I'm gonna take this one in view of the late hour, sitting down and moving along. So, we're focusing here on the tree issues at Neptune Park next. These, these trees have been here for 200, 250 years. They were named in honor of Neptune and Isla Small. They've really been iconic trees in the park. We've had three recent limb falls. This one fortunately occurred at night, and you can see on the left-hand side, the limb was so big and so heavy, it crushed one of the concrete picnic tables. Fortunately, it occurred at night when nobody was sitting there having an afternoon picnic with their family. So, we've really got a bad problem we have to deal with. Next one. And these trees are iconic. They're very important in Neptune Park. They honored a very important man in the history of Glen County. And right now, as you look out from the stage on Veterans Day, you can see how beautiful they are in the distance, but they're surrounded by an ugly orange plastic fence with a "do not enter" sign, because we really don't know when the next fall may occur. So, this is a big problem, is this is the limb that fell. And from the outside, if you looked at it, you really couldn't tell it was diseased. On the inside, about 75 to 80% of that limb was diseased. But on the outside, as I just said, it's really no apparent difference, one limb to the other. So, it's not as if an arborist can come and just point to two or three limbs that need to come down, and we can move on. So, fortunately, the members of the Golden Isles Fund for Trees got involved. And this is a busy slide, but let me just point out the bullet points. They retained a master arborist. A master arborist is the highest professional designation. And this was an addition to work that was done by our local consultant arborist, Don Gardner, and Andy Jones of the Jones Tree Service. The observation, the trees are aging, but there are encouraging signs they could survive for many years to come. And they recommended that we put fence around the trees to protect the trees and the public during this period of uncertainty, and that we relocate the picnic trees. And they presented these recommendations to the Glen County Tree Board, who unanimously supported the recommendation October 29. So, what we've done already, we put the temporary fencing up, we've installed the warning signs. But we need to move forward with permanent fencing and relocation of the picnic tables are the most important and the most expensive aspect of this ask, which basically is to allow the county manager and the Director of Public Works to put out an RFP, to get a professional master landscape designer, architect, to work with the arborist's recommendation, and move forward with relocation of these concrete picnic tables. I just don't think they can be under these iconic trees anymore. And then, put up more permanent fencing. Until such time, the arborist believes that, you know, maybe we've passed the danger point. I have no idea when that might be. Nobody does. So, Dave, this is the, this is an example down in Florida of what was done with a similar important specimen tree. They put up a nice, permanent fence that's attractive and fits the, fits the character of the area, the community. And this is what I'm hoping we will end up with, when we move to those two critical aspects of the plan. And it will cost a significant amount of money, but I think it's important enough for the community, for us to move forward with this. Dave, do you have anything to add to that? Any cost estimates at all to come up with something like that and move the picnic tables? And I know they said we could possibly leave pavers there, because the pavers really are permeable, and you could actually care for the trees through the pavers. But let's say we had to move the table somewhere in the park and put up a fence like that. Any idea of ballpark?
We have some fence quotes that are under $20,000.
Wow.
It doesn't have a little brick column on it.
Well, we need a little brick column. We need something nice like that.
And then, you know, the architect, and then what he designs, and where he designs. And then, your challenge is gonna be, anytime you put a table out there, you're gonna need some shade over it, so.
I mean, once we relocate the current picnic tables, they'd have to be in a shady spot.
Well, they need to be a shady spot, or we're gonna end up putting some shade over them.
I get it. And I agree with you.
So, that's gonna, that's gonna cost.
And looking at that park, just so we're all airing out the obvious, if we put a big fence around these two iconic trees, we're really cutting down the area for public space utilization. So, it's gonna be a smaller park, we probably have to have fewer picnic tables.
Or they'd be in a completely different location.
Yes, sir. So, that's the ask, really, is to allow the county manager and the public works to go out, put an RFP, find out how much it's gonna cost, come back to the finance committee with a number, and then we bubble it up to the Board of Commissioners. And I would have much preferred to have one or two of the ladies of the Golden Isles Fund for Trees here to present this, but I was just afraid if we put it off till December, it's four weeks again of delay, and this is something I want to keep moving forward.
Yeah, this, to me, is a serious safety situation.
Yes.
'Cause, you know, my church used to have events over there, and I just, you know, could imagine, you know, sitting there, and some of the kids, or even my mom was with us at times, and something like that happening, 'cause they wouldn't have been able to get out of the way. So.
Okay, commissioners, I think.
Sound reasonable and move forward. Everybody in agreement?
I would, I would want to keep the public going under there, but that fence.
I don't know if it'll keep you safe.
They've got, they've got two wide openings there for people to walk under. That's what you're breaking apart, you're breaking columns.
Where you put a, you'd put a gate there.
You put a gate there and put a lock on it.
I mean, you have to have something to allow the people to fertilize the trees and care for this. So, anyway, that's a minor, this is not the finished product. But we want something attractive that will replace those darn yellow police tapes and the plastic fence.
You could put up some good gates to go with that fence.
Yeah.
If they cut down on the cost for doing the work.
Well, Dave, I think you've got your marching orders to look at all the options and bring us back something we can move forward on. I think it's time sensitive. I agree with Commissioner Murphy.
Let's make this a project we keep pushing forward, Dave. If you wouldn't mind, hit that RFP out there, get it before the finance committee, so we can move this forward. Thank you very much.
All right. Discussing regarding the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. Who's got this one?
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move fast.
I don't know, you know, it gets about 4:30. It's time for that.
Well, good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for your time. And I know, last but not least, and it has been a long session, so I'll try to make it brief. But this will give me an opportunity to share with you funding opportunities that are coming down the pipe, hopefully within the next month or so. So, just to give you an idea of opportunities or chances that Glen County may open itself to. So, the CDVG is the Community Development Block Grant, and the DR stands for Disaster Recovery or Disaster Relief. Now, these funds became available to the state of Georgia because of the 2017 presidentially declared disasters, particularly Hurricane Irma and the Southwest Georgia tornadoes. Once Congress allocated those funds to help communities such as Georgia recover from these disasters, they gave the funds to the state, and the state in return gave it to the Department of Community Affairs, to see how they were going to be distributed within those that most impacted communities. What the Department of Community Affairs found was that throughout several presentations that they did throughout the state was that three of the most impacted were the 31705, which is Albany, 31548, which is Kingsland, and 31520, which is Brunswick, which were the ones who had the brunt of the damages from these disasters. So, what they did is they decided to allocate all of their funding into three different criteria, criterias, or unmet needs. And they decided to put their monies into housing, business, and infrastructure. If you total all that up, it's about $37,943 million. And these funds are to help residents and communities recover through other resources that didn't come through, for example, insurance, loans, donations, or assistance from the Small Business Administration. And when the information came down to us, to Glen County, and I met with the Director of Community Development, Ms. Pam Thompson, and Ms. Catherine Dallas, we kinda brainstormed as to how we can position ourselves to be able to apply for these funds. And we gathered that because of the 31520 requirement, which is where the monies need to go, housing was at the top of that list. So, within the housing criteria that Department of Community Affairs wants to allocate those $10 million, they divided it between the three SIP codes, between Albany, Kingsland, and Brunswick. So, they are projecting, they're still in the projection phase, they're projecting to allocate the 31520 SIP code $2,148 through 112, not meaning that they cannot go back and change those allocations. Right now, they're just projecting what they would, they think that they're, that's the amount that will trickle down to our community. Now, why is this of importance to Glen County? Because the 31520 SIP code does pertain to a portion of Glen County, particularly north of Fourth Street, the ARCO area, in which right now, where we have a CHIP program, where we're doing some renovations and repairs for low-income residents. So, that's the reason why we thought it would be relevant and important to us, because we do have a small portion of the 31520. Now, within the housing sector, what is allowable under this grant? Where can the monies go? It can do renovations or repairs in those affordable rentals. It can go into homeowner-occupied units, or it can go to build, or renew, or rebuild assisted and public housing. Now, looking at our inventory and just the historical data that we've collected with working with the CHIP program, we propose to put those monies that will be trickling down from Department of Community Affairs, but that we will still have to apply for, in homeowner-occupied, stick-built units, or manufactured homes in the designated area. So, it's pretty similar to the CHIP program, just probably with a little bit different requirements. We can expand within our entire Glen County 31520 area versus with the CHIP is very defined, and sometimes a block or two, and some of our residents haven't been able to qualify, even though they're in the county. And, but the CHIP has been a very, very defined location where we can work. The program will provide housing rehabilitation and reconstruction for storm-impacted structures, meaning if those residents apply, they got impacted because of Hurricane Irma. They applied for assistance through FEMA, and they were referred immediately to the Small Business Administration, which is usually what the standard did. And they were offered a loan, and nine times out of 10, low-income residents decided not to apply for that loan, just considering the capacity to repay that amount, that loan. So, based on that documentation, or a denial from their insurance, DCA will dictate what documentation we'll be able to collect, then we will be able to register or enlist that resident to possibly receive that kind of, that kind of benefit. The program will only benefit moderate to low-income homeowners to meet the, obviously, the national standard. This is a two-year grant, and just based on, and, you know, our staffing and our ability to cover as many units as possible within 24 months, we considered working on 10 units within the 31520 county jurisdiction, at a maximum of $88,000. Doesn't mean that we're gonna spend $88,000 in every unit, it just means that would be our cap. And if we just do a little bit of the math, 10 units times $88,000, our proposed request would be $880,000. Now, again, let me just clarify, the request for proposals has not been released by the Department of Community Affairs. They're still doing projections, they're still doing analysis. So, we hope that within the month, within a month or two, they'll release that request for solicitations or proposals, and we'll be able to put a grant packet together to submit. So, when this solicitation does open, I think the reason why, the second reason why I'm here, besides informing you of this possible grant opportunity, is how would you like for this application to look like? So, a consideration could be given to submitting a joint city-county application, with the city being the lead applicant, meaning they would bear the front of the procurement, the reporting, the progress reports. reporting, the, the progress reports, the financial reports, and that we would just kind of tackle on, onto, onto their, their efforts. Or consideration of submitting a single county application, meaning we would, just like with all of our other grants or how we did with our chip program, we submitted a single application and then we did all the work. The benefits of submitting a joint application is during period review, higher scoring, because you're going in leveraging resources with another community. And then the city would be the lead applicant and they would administer the grant.
Yeah, I asked Monica to look at this. The staff was already looking at this after talking with the CDBG manager at the city about this because I wasn't, I was unaware of the, the possible source of funding. But I think that going in together would really increase our chances of, of getting this. I'm assuming, well, I guess it's going to be allocated toward us anyway. It's just the amount.
Correct. So in the joint application, we, we would request a particular amount for Glenn County. It wouldn't be, well, it would be a total amount, but within that amount, an allocation for Glenn County. So we could do the repairs on the 10 units that we're proposing.
Right. And so with the VOAD program that we organized, which is the Disaster Relief Collaborative, we had a group in here, and they are, they identified 92 projects with a value of $1.7 million in unmet need. So it's in line with this, this source.
I'm, I'm bored, but I've, I've got a couple of questions. Is the city on board?
Yes, as far as I know.
They are, they are. And we recently submitted a joint list of needs to Department, the Department of Community Affairs.
Yeah, the other question I have. Apparently we have 10 individual property owners or individuals that, on average, we're looking at asking for $88,000.
No, sir. We would request from the Department of Community Affairs the entire amount. And in return, if approved, when these funds come down to the county, then I would do community outreach and see who would be eligible, just like we did with the chip program. And then they would do a full application and see if they're eligible or not.
So we hadn't identified anybody that needs the money yet?
Well, I have, I have a waiting list. So if they were, for the chip program.
Yes.
So they were to fall within the 31520, then I would extend an invitation for them to come in and apply. Of course.
The individuals, will they have to pay, will they have to pay any of this back or match any of this?
No, sir. There is no match. The only caution is that the request for proposals has not been released. So that means all the requirements for the, for the lead applicant and the homeowner, so it hasn't been spelled out. So this is just information, preliminary information, but right now there is no match requirement.
I'm just saying, at the end of the day, if money shows up in Glenn County, $880,000 for whoever this is, they all did the unincorporated part of 31520. We could get that money, provided applications are correct. And there's no matching money of any kind. There's no cost to the beneficiary. I mean, they.
Usually they have to, there's an affordable, I guess they call it an affordable period where you have to stay in the house for at least five years or something like that. That, that, that will probably be a part of the requirement.
I'm just, I'm just concerned because every time we talk about grants, money from government and all that, somebody got in the head a little bit on the side. And we're talking about people that probably really need this money.
Right.
So badly that, I mean, they're probably in a condition that they have to do a matching and can't do it. And so that's what I was wondering about.
Right, right.
Monica, who monitors the $88,000? I mean, as far as bricks and mortar?
It would be a reimbursement grant. So meaning anytime we go in and complete a project just with a chip, you know, then it's, it's on actual expenses, whatever we incurred or did in that property. Like I said, it can go up to 88,000, but it could only be 50,000, 53. So after we've completed the, the pro, the construction, the renovation, then we request reimbursement for that address, for that property, and then we get our money back.
Well, the city's the lead agency, right?
So that, that is a consideration. Either it's a joint application or it's a single.
Who would be in charge of it for the county? In other words, oversee, I think what, and I didn't mean to interrupt the chairman, but I think that's where he's getting at. Who would do it for the county?
Ms. Pam Thompson would do the code enforcement part of it. Will do the initial inspection, but I would do most of the load work as far as the progress reports.
What do you mean, we would? I'm wondering who's going to actually be doing the construction work?
Contractors.
Contractors.
How would you select the contractors?
We have a bid. Go ahead, Monica.
No problem. You have to follow procurement process. You bid it out. And that would not be our role. It would be the city's role as the lead applicant, but they, because they are managing the grant, or they would, if they, you decide to do a joint application.
So when you started, you said the ZIP code 31520 had $2.1 million and change for the grant. And, and now we're asking for $880,000. I missed, I missed the step from one to the other.
The majority of it's in the city. Yeah, the rest of it, we, we go to the city.
So the 31520 ZIP code would be asking for $2.1 million?
Right.
Okay.
880 comes out of that for the unincorporated area.
Okay, okay.
Potentially.
We're still, we're still asking for the, the anticipated allocated amount.
And it's primarily the ARCO area. Isn't that where we're talking about?
Right, right.
And we got Washington Heights over there too.
Monica, I'm sorry. The contractor out there goes to Lang Building Supply and orders it to the force, and they're delivering. How, what, how does Lang get paid in a timely manner if we've got to go through this process?
Well, that's why you have the contractors. Usually the contractors will purchase the supplies, the equipment, the, you know, the, the skilled individuals to do the work. So we, we pay the contractor to do that. They're, they're pretty much doing it for us. Does that make sense?
Cashes it out unless it's a little quicker reimbursement than FEMA, I'm saying.
Correct.
I got you. I got you. Okay.
Right. It's not anything new from our process. It's just the, this money is available.
I'm there. Got it. Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
Nope. Nope. You're the best.
Thank you.
Yep.
I want to look at getting some interns to help. Dr. Fairley at the college, they have a nonprofit fundraising part of what she did. And to help, help up with identifying grants and even preparing.
So let me just.
Heather Fairley.
All right. There's only one other item that I had written down so I wouldn't forget it. And I think that our lead counsel wants to introduce a, I mean, if we make a big fanfare over a dog, we gotta, we gotta make a big fanfare over.
I know that was a good lead in there, Mr. Jeff.
A new county attorney. So Eric, why don't you make our, um, much needed introduction here?
Commissioners, how did you close this on? Provena, sorry. She started with us about two weeks ago. A recent graduate of DGA, just passed the bar. So we are excited to have her here with us. Here's our Commissioners, the Lord.
What was it?
Claire Provena.
Claire?
Claire.
Okay, all right.
Claire, we're glad to have you. Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard. All right. Anybody want to stay a while longer?
Yeah, I've got a couple more issues.
Yeah.
Put those slides up, will you?
Have a good Thanksgiving. Have a safe Thanksgiving.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Have a great.